Allegiance led by the Vice Mayor Brian Moreira.
Please remain standing for an invocation led by Councilmember J.C. Fernandez.
Lord, thank you so much for this evening. Thank you for all the residents that are here. We ask that you bless us, that you, that the decisions that we make here tonight, that they be of you and that we're guided by your wisdom and that we do the work for the people. In Jesus's name, amen.
You may take a seat. Welcome and thank you all for joining us. The time is currently 6:53 PM. We had a little bit of an issue getting our livestream going. So that is why we're a bit delayed. But here we are. We're going to get underway. I'm pleased to be joined by all my current colleagues on the dais. Tonight is a workshop. It's also meant to be a listening event, right? We're here for you. This is part of our new efforts that the council recently spearheaded to hear directly from you, for those of you that live in a neighborhood service district, regardless of the type that you live in. Before continuing though, I do want to acknowledge our local celebrity and our former colleague, Mayor Verano, who is here. Thank you for joining us. And so again, this is your night. We're not going to have a time limit for you to speak. Although because of the amount of people that are here, I would ask you to please be mindful of your neighbors as you're speaking and to please continue to keep that in mind as the evening continues, right? So we can try to get you all here at a different time, or at a decent time, rather. So moving on from there, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Vice Mayor Moreira, who is one of the architects of these quarterly meetings, and I'm going to have him go ahead and say some words and introduce us.
Alrighty, getting right back into business. Before we jump into public comments, I think public comments are usually best when informed. With that said, I know JP has a little bit of a presentation. Give us some basic knowledge about the status and what's going on, and then we'll open up for public comments as well as for discussion by members of the council.
Good, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to thank everyone for attending today's meeting. We have a great turnout, so it's nice to know that everyone got their notified about the meeting. I would like to direct you over to the TVs for a brief PowerPoint on, we're going to be discussing. Give me one second. Technical difficulties. There we go. So in today's meeting, we're going to be discussing an introduction to neighborhood service districts for Lake HOAs, which I'm sure a lot of, a lot of you here are here for. Additionally, we will be talking about updates to our current NSDs, our lake maintenance NSDs, our security guard service NSDs, as well as some NSD management enhancements that we've been working on. So what is a neighborhood service district? A neighborhood service district is created by public improvement, created to provide public improvements and special services funded by residents within the district through non-advalorem assessments. Some examples would be security guards, multipurpose landscaping, which as an example would be maintaining common areas, landscaping, community entrances, and tree canopy. Neighborhood street lighting, lake maintenance, which is what this presentation is directed for, as well as certain capital improvement projects such as street lighting improvements and roadway resurfacing. So the town currently oversees six NSDs. We have four security guard service districts and two lake maintenance districts, Lake Hilda and Lake Patricia. Legal authority for NSDs is, we're authorized under Miami-Dade County Code Chapters 18 and 28. Municipalities like the town of Miami Lakes are gained authority to create and manage municipal NSDs on November 8, 2016. So the town's role in NSDs includes a dedicated town liaison. You're looking at him. He's right here. As well as coordination of services. These services can be procurement, for example, facilities, etc., oversight of our vendors, ensuring they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, ensuring compliance with established standards, for example, contract standards, code standards, or state laws. Additionally, we have financial oversight. Our finance department works diligently to ensure vendors are paid on time, that everything is managed properly. And then we have our dedicated budget manager right here, Ms. Melissa. Shout out to Melissa. She manages the budgets for the NSDs. So these are the steps to create an NSD. We're going to go over all of them in, at length. Step one would be to submit a letter of intent. An HOA may submit a letter of intent to the town's Parks and Recreation Department. In the absence of an HOA, at least 10% of area property owners may submit a signed letter of intent, and that letter must describe desired improvements, district boundaries, and the level of service. Step two would be the petition process. So once the letter of intent has been submitted, town staff would go ahead and prepare a petition package based on the letter of intent. The package would include a description of the proposed level of service, as well as a range of assessments estimated for the services. HOAs or community volunteers, as we mentioned, with the 10% of the, of the community, would then circulate the petition among all residents included in that proposed district. A maximum of four months is allowed to collect these signatures. Otherwise, you would need to restart the process all over again. Petition is then returned to town staff. Once it's returned, town staff would verify each of the property owner's homestead exemption, and petition must contain at least 50% or more of the resident property owners for the process to continue. So step three would be a feasibility and cost study. The town staff would then provide a report to council, which includes a detail of improvements, cost estimate, and the assessment method. In the case of Lake HOAs, the assessment method would be distributed equally among all units or parcels within the district. And then it also includes the district boundaries. Step four, district creation. There would be a public hearing conducted by town council, most likely at a regular council meeting or a, a, what's the word here? Not a workshop, a sunshine meeting, no? Or a workshop. Residents or concerned citizens may speak at this, on this proposed district, ask any questions. If town council decides the proposed district should move forward to an election, the creation of the district and ballot language is adopted by ordinance, and the assessment role is adopted by resolution. Why is the assessment adopted by resolution? Because each year, the assessment role would change. So it would have to be adopted by resolution, the assessment rate. What happened here? There we go. Step five is district ratification. An election is conducted by mail on an available election date set by the Miami-Dade Elections Department. All registered voters within the district boundaries are eligible to vote. Voting requirements are determined by Miami-Dade County plat restrictions. So for example, a majority vote of 50% plus one required to ratify. That is for lakes that are intended for public use or property owners reserve rights for, for public use. If it's, if the lake is not intended for public use, then 100% approval by the surrounding lake owners would be required to ratify. If the vote doesn't pass, the creation of, the creation ordinance is then by rescinded, and the proposed district will not move forward. Here are the lakes that require a majority vote of 50%, 50% plus one for ratification. Those are Dunwoody Lake, Lake Cynthia, Lake Elizabeth, Lake Glen Ellen, Lake Gloria, Lake Martha, Lake Michael, Lake Roseanne, and Lake Valerie. Lakes requiring 100% approval from surrounding lake property owners include Lake Adele, Lake Andrews, Lock Andrews, Lake Carroll, Lock Isle, Lake Catherine, Lock Loman, Lock Loman East, Lock Loman West, Lake Mary, Lake Sandra, Lake Sarah, Lake Susie, Lake Windmill East, Lake Windmill West, Silvercrest Lake North, and Silvercrest Lake South. So collection of special assessments, this is the final step in the process. The special assessment is collected through property tax bills on non-advalorem assessments. They cover maintenance costs, administrative costs, and reserves. If there are any unpaid assessments, this can result in a, in property liens on the homeowner. Let me rephrase. This is the final step. Step eight is the implementation phase, which would include final planning, the contract establishment for the lake maintenance service, which could be either piggybacking through a current contract that we have in place, or going out to bid. And then finally, the services would commence. There we go. Process timeline. The full estimated timeframe for implementation could take anywhere from 12 to 24 months. Some of the factors that are included in this would be meeting scheduling. The, the ordinances, to adopt the ordinance would take two public readings. It could also be factored by the available date by Miami-Dade's Elections Department. As far as collection of special assessments, they would be, in November, they would be ratified. They would be, the following November, they would take effect for ratification. And then this is based on the, from the start of submission. If you do have any questions, you could always reach out to me, your friendly neighborhood NSD town liaison. My contact information is there. Your next steps is to discuss with your HOA or your neighbors to assess the level of interest in becoming an NSD.
Thank you, JP. And before we continue on with tonight's program, I just wanted to provide a bit more context as far as why JP just gave the presentation that he did. So a while ago, a resident contacted me asking me about how often the particular lake that her daughter was swimming in was treated because she was at a birthday party with some friends, and when she came out of the lake, she started complaining about ear pain and subsequently became very ill. Fortunately, she recovered. It wasn't anything related to the lake. However, it gave her a scare and it got me thinking, well, I do know for a fact that there are some areas of town, Lake Susie, for example, one of them, that used to have an HOA that is now defunct, right? And so right now, there really isn't anybody taking care of that lake. So this seemed like a potential option for those homeowners to go ahead and get some information, create an NSD, so that they can create one that will have minimum criteria for treating the lake and ensure that the lake moving forward is appropriate for different recreational aquatic activities, right? To give us the confidence that we can fish there, that our kids can swim in them, much as I did when I was younger on Lake Sarah. And so that was the intent behind this. And for those of you that currently have an HOA that does maintain a lake, like Mantise, you guys do a phenomenal job maintaining your lake. When I walk by there, it's pretty evident when you look at the water itself, right? But of course, we all know that there are HOAs that over time, they start getting less and less participation, and eventually they die, right? They become defunct. They stop operating. So looking ahead, all I wanted to do was to present the option, and only the option, for those of you that live on a lake to explore creating an NSD that will maintain the lake in, excuse me, maintain the lake in perpetuity, so that we always have that assurance that the lakes are being maintained and treated to ensure, again, that they're safe for human use. So that is where that comes from. But it's solely an option for those of you that know of neighbors who live on a lake that is not being treated, like Lake Susie, you can give them JP's information and put them in contact, and that might be something they want to explore. But that was the point of this point, or part of the presentation tonight. With that, I'm going to, again, because being that this is our inaugural quarterly meeting, and our Vice Mayor was the architect behind this, I'm going to let him go ahead and continue from here. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, JP. That was an excellent presentation, and I think it would be a phenomenal idea for that entire presentation to end up on the NSD portion of our, of our website, just so that those who were here can see it again, if they, you know, didn't have a chance to take notes, or for those who weren't here. And I think it applies as to how you make any NSD, not necessarily just for lakes. So I think it's a really good resource, and you did a good job on it. With that being said, I'll open up the floor to public comments. If you have a public comment specifically as to the lakes and what was presented and the possible creation of a new one, I would suggest come up first, since that wasn't, you know, it's the theme that's being discussed right now, but otherwise, it's fresh. But by, by no means, you know, any public comments you may have, come on up. And as the mayor had said, there is no time limit, but do be cognizant that there may be other people who want to speak. If anything, maybe bring up one or two issues and then take a break, let a few other people speak, and then come back up. Because again, there's no set format for this. Anyone? I'm going to turn it over to our dais. If there's any questions that you have for the audience, for JP, anybody? Councilmember Fernandez, you're recognized.
Well, I definitely thank you for the presentation, JP, and I think it's important for those, I don't live on a lake, but I think that, that I'll speak for my neighbors in Royal Oaks. I know Silvercrest included, and because I saw some of the names on there that have, some of those lakes that you mentioned were, were, take, were, are inside Royal Oaks. And I know they maintain those lakes. Silvercrest, I believe, does too. So I don't think that anybody wants to create NSDs. I don't think that's the intent. I think it's for those lakes that don't have any maintenance. I think that's the intent. So I, I just want to be clear on that, because we're not trying to get bigger government.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. Anybody else? I'll briefly pose the question to the audience, and maybe this will stir up some public comments, which is, is everything working perfectly in your NSD? If not, now's the time to let us know. You know, part of what we aim to do is bring the council to you. In the past, you had the advisory boards, you know, they, they were doing a good job, but at times, it wasn't reaching us. Now you have us here to hear you out. Maybe you don't like how security's doing. Maybe you don't like the chemicals or whatever procedure is being used on the lake. Whatever the case may be, go ahead and let us know. This is what we're here for. And I believe, Councilmember Hersberg, you wanted to be recognized?
Well, first, if anyone's coming up, I'll let them come up first, and then I guess have some questions for JP.
Would anyone like to make any comments? Ms. Reynolds?
Okay. Esperanza Reynolds, and we all know I'm Lake Glen Ellen. First, thank you so much for the work that you have done as a council, and in particular, you, Mr. Moreira. It is incredible since that passed that we have lived very tranquil lives. We are not stressed. No one is making decisions on our behalf, because every one of us has the right to make a decision as property owners. So I sincerely thank you for the removal of the advisory boards. As for the lake, the town is close to us. This is our government. And if a lake is not treating the waters well, if they just simply create some sort of a process in the town where you can actually put a bill to every property owner that lives around that lake, maybe that is a way for us to also go. Because the thing that we fear the most when we have an NSD, which is really a special taxing district, is the fact that that bill comes through the property appraiser's office. And therefore, if we are unable to make payment at any point, they sell the tax receipt of our home, and we, our homes are gone. Whereas if we have a problem with the town of Miami Lakes and we are not paying for the maintenance of the lake, I am sure you guys can put a lien on our homes. You can fight us off. You can do whatever. But it would be a nicer way to protect some of us, in particular, those of us that have lived for a very long time and now find that we are about to not be able to continue to cope with all of the expenses. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope. Anybody else for public comments? Stephen, or Councilmember?
Thank, and thank you, Hope, because I actually brought up a question. The lakes that we are understanding have issues with maintenance. Are those lakes in private property? Are they owned equally by the homes surrounding them? What's our responsibility as a town and the liability if those lakes aren't being maintained properly? And the negative effects to the town?
The town wouldn't have any liability. Those are owned by the property owners. So if their lakes aren't being treated for, there's, there's nothing outside of creating an NSD that would be able to be done. So they can't create an NSD, and then we would have oversight as a town to, to assist. We are creating minimum standards for our lakes that we oversee. However, they will be posted on the website, as well as they will be in, as part of the contract with our vendor. So if other, if other lakes would like to utilize those minimum standards for their own lake, they are welcome to do so. Having said that, you know, as far as the, for the, for the NSDs, the biggest thing is some, some property owners either aren't helping to, to fund the lakes. That's the, the biggest thing that I've heard back, feedback-wise, is we can't get everyone to, to help out. They may not have HOAs, some of, some of them. So they're not able to acquire the funding needed to go ahead and, and maintain their lakes. This would be an avenue to go ahead and do so.
I guess maybe a discussion point for us. My, my concern is properly maintained lakes creates an issue, not just for the people on the lake, creates an issue for everybody. So what is our, I really don't know, the project for us, but what does our code say about how you have to maintain the lakes? If they're privately owned, somebody has to maintain it. We can't allow the lakes to just, you know, go bad. There, there needs, something needs to be done to keep them up, and if, if, maybe it's a code issue, right?
Yeah, I agree with you that it's a public safety issue, and that was one of the reasons why I wanted to present this option as part of my item that we had passed, and also more specifically, in order to standardize how the lakes were treated, create these minimum criteria for how to do so, and then also to publish it so it can serve as a model for everybody else to follow. Of course, every, everybody's free on the other HOAs to treat it more than what's there, but the idea is to create a minimum treatment level so that we know what it's safe for, for swimming, for fishing, things of that nature. I agree with you, though. We got to find a way there, and perhaps that could be the focus of another council workshop.
Do you want to be recognized? Come on over.
Just point of privilege really quick. Jeremy Bagdon, Director of Parks and Recreation. In our research and looking at minimum standards, I do want to make it clear that Florida statute has essentially preempted. It's allowed through Florida statutes for wall or quality management and enforcement. They also gov, they also give some of that governance to the county, so then it becomes more of a health issue. And then that's where that enforcement will lie, within county health department.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of pushing it to the county and relying on another government, that's for sure. So I think it's worth a discussion.
I firmly believe that the lake should be.
I firmly believe the lake should be maintained. And I live on a lake. I look at a lake. Has any consideration been given to the fact that the lakes are also polluted by the stormwater runoff? I don't think it's a, my responsibility for all the crap that comes off the road, that is pollution. Probably, that's what makes you sick too. So I think some considerations should be given to that.
Absolutely. Some of these lakes, of course, are more prone to receiving stormwater runoff than others. And in fact, I think Lake Catherine most recently was affected by a contractor boring into a sewage pipe that led to a spill there. So I, again, these are all reasons why I want us to be more proactive with these lakes. I mean, it's in our name. It's a big part of our identity. And for me especially, it was a big part of my childhood growing up, and I think for many of us as well. So I definitely want to make sure that we find ways to ensure that it's safe, and not only in terms of just from letting it go stagnant and, and things accumulating there, but also, yeah, to deal with runoff issues.
The houses were being built here by the Graham family, and they wanted lakes, etc. But the fill that up my house is built on was removed from that lake. So it's for the benefit of the developers and stuff. In my opinion, the town should be, it should be prorated. I live on a lake. I enjoy it. But the town should have a heavy investment in maintaining those lakes. So.
Understood, understood. By the way, which lake are you on, out of curiosity? Which lake are you on?
I'm on Lake Mary. Probably the, probably the worst lake in the neighborhood.
Really? I thought Louis used to maintain it, right, like with the air raiders?
Well, we have an HOA. We have a contract, but it has not been done properly.
Okay, I used to live on Point Sienna, and I know my friend, neighbor Louis, used to go out there.
Lake Susie's owned in front of, well, in front of my house.
No, no.
It has improved. It's clear. You can look at it. You can see the bottom. But again, it's not just a property owner that should have responsibility. And this goes back for years when this was all developed, so.
Understood, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, thank you to the chair. Just a quick question. I want to thank everybody for being here. This is what it's all about, right? Getting feedback from the, from the residents. And I do believe minimum standards is the key to all lakes. We have, we have to keep, maintain our lakes. As the mayor said, it's in our name. Just to the staff, are there any grants available at this time through the county, state, or, or the government when it comes to helping communities maintain their lakes, education program, anything that we can tap into that'll help, at least with the, with the process? I know the majority of lake issues is oxygen and aeration, and if you have good aeration, even when temperatures rise, you're not going to get the algae blooms because of the oxygen content of the, of the water. Anything that we can tap into to help residents, especially those that don't have HOAs or are having issues right now? or having issues right now with that, with the lake?
We haven't come across any during our management of the Neighborhood Service District. Doesn't mean we can't look into it. We'll take a deeper dive into kind of some of the Florida resilience programs that are out there, some of the DEP programs that are out there and see if there's anything particular. The only hardship we might face is the ownership of some of this land obviously is divided amongst property owners. So we'd have to see how we navigate applying for essentially areas that may not pertain directly to us. While we manage them, they're still owned by the homesteaded property owners.
Maybe a way around that is, you know, our certain wildlife, our, you know, certain waiting birds that come in, they don't care who owns the lake at all, right? So, so if, if, if we do have waiting birds coming in or, or, you know, just native birds using the lake or, or, or the fish and things like that, maybe that'd be an animal you'd go through. And that'll maybe help us with, with that aspect of it, the wildlife situation.
Definitely. Being a, a recent bird designating herself as a bird sanctuary, that's definitely a good avenue to take. So we'll go ahead and take that into notation and make sure that we, we look into a little further with our grants department.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Mr. Cruz?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Going back to the NSD, how used to work Lake Patricia and Lake Martha? Didn't we have like an NSD committee that will take care of those lakes and come and give a, an idea to the council? If I remember when those NSD were around, that's how it used to be, right?
I think you're referring to Lake Patricia and Lake Hilda.
Lake Hilda, I'm sorry.
So when Lake Hilda was first created by Councilmember Tony Lama, there was no advisory board. It was just run by the county as an NSD. And then I believe Lake Patricia followed suit afterward, but prior to any NSD boards being created. And then later, when they were transferred to the town and then the council went ahead and created the boards, then those advisory boards were created. And that's where you had Rudy, for example, who took charge of Lake Patricia. I forget who took charge of Lake Hilda. But yes, that is the timeline as I understand it as far as when the NSDs were created and then the boards.
And how were they able to maintain those lakes? How will they get the funds? The, the residents will pay for it? And these people being part of the NSD, they will take care of those, how to collect the money in, in order to be able to clean them, right?
So for example, Lake Hilda was having issues trying to, because they were voluntary association. They were having issues trying to get all their members to go ahead and contribute toward the maintenance of the lake. So this provided a solution, as Ms. Reynolds pointed out, to collect the maintenance fees from each property owner through their, their property tax bill in order to ensure that those NSDs were fully funded.
My, 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 my biggest issue Miami Lakes, why are we called Miami Lakes? Because of all the lakes. That was the dream of the Graham's back in the days. And all these lakes had an association. Those associations with time, they died, people didn't care about it. A lot of people don't like associations. I don't know why, because they do a lot of good more than bad. But then again, that's a personal opinion and matter. I'm all for less government and more government. Hope had a, a very good point that our community is getting older and there's a lot of old folks here that cannot afford, not even paying almost FPL for the electrical bill. Creating an NSD is going to create an issue with taxes because like she said, you don't pay your taxes, that tax bill is going to be sold to a third party that can go ahead and lien your property. You pay it, you're out or they sell the house. That's, I'm totally against that. The other issue we have is more like a code issue than anything else. Like in Royal Oaks, we have a huge problem. I don't know how the county back in the days when Mr. Lovell did the development in the eighties, early eighties, he got approved to hold those lakes without any access. The access is because we got to ask the neighbors or the residents to give us access so we can clean the lake. Right now, there's a person here that I, I want to thank her for the years that you allowed us to go through your house to clean the lake. Her lake right now is not being cleaned because she's not, and I understand the people were not careful going through her house. They will not put things back where they belong. She got fed up and she said, no more. They're not coming through my house anymore. Now it's impossible, JC knows it, to get somebody to give us access to clean that lake. What do we do? The town needs to come up with a solution, perhaps on the zoning code and not only in Royal Oaks, but all over town, forcing people to maintain the lakes. These lakes were supposed to be for the private use. We were trying to change our bylaws last year, okay? You need 75% plus one vote in order to change the bylaws. It took us about five years to do the draft and it cost us about $30,000 to do that. You know how many votes we got? Fifty-six. How many people are here today? How many residents do we have in town? Same thing happened when we had the committee. Nobody showed up. Nobody cares until something happens. And we got to be very careful trying to create more and more and more taxes, more committees, more NSD. That, that's, that's, that, that could be a bomb to explode at any time. So please think about it and, and let's think about it a little bit more and try to get involved, DERM, HRS, and our zoning code. There's a lot of things that we need to change in town. I'm glad that the charter is coming up for revision as well because we need to work on that. Twenty-five years is a long time and I, I'm planning to stay here at least another 25 if I can. So thank you again. Congratulations to all of you, okay?
Thank you, Almeno. I did want to point out though, for Ms. Reynolds' benefit though, and, and to partly respond to Mr. Cruz though, that the reason why I like the NSD option, right, as opposed to just going through the code option is that with the NSD option, as you heard JP state, you have to vote on it, right? So there is an election that goes on there, whereas of course with the code, that is us imposing it. But again, I'm open to the ideas. I, I think all of us are united in not creating unnecessary government. And I think that's one of the reasons why I like the NSD creation process in that you actually have to vote in order to approve it. And the threshold does change a little bit, but the point is that there is an election. And, and Mr. Cruz is right though. We have a lot of challenges that we need to address. And I'm committed to working with my colleagues on, on trying to address as many of those issues as possible. Jen Exis, did you want to come up?
Doing great. Thank you.
Now that you're bringing options, why not a community development district instead? Why, you know, we have one in Satori. It works great. We have 482 homes. We have a board. Is government managed? If we can say that. But then the homeowners are part of that board and they make the decisions.
I believe the main difference is with the NSD, the application process goes through us. With the CDD, I, I could be wrong. I think it goes through the state because it's essentially they're creating a mini HOA just for the lake.
It's a small city.
Yeah.
So what you'll be gonna do is create a small city for all these people and they can control it themselves and it doesn't have to go through you.
But we can create it as, as if.
No, but maybe, maybe all these people can create that district.
I think that's not a bad idea. My only concern with that is long-term is the issue of participation. I think, for example, in Satori, I think you guys have more enough people to almost guarantee and people that are used to having a HOA structure that are going to, it's going to keep busy.
So how many people, how many homes are affected by this?
I don't have that number with me.
Like how many, you have like, what, eight lakes?
Uh, we have more.
Or more? I don't know. I was looking at the presentation, but how many homes? I mean, at Satori, we're only 482. I'm sure there's more than 400. I mean, and Omedo, how many houses do you have?
Sixty, six, sixty-seven.
So that's, that's one neighborhood.
Do you know how many of those are lake, lake homes? As opposed to just, yeah, yeah, lake.
I think it's an interesting thing to look into. I'm not prepared to say this is the exact difference between the NSD and the CDDs. But from, as to the point of self-management that you're bringing up, I'm all for it. The only difference, or the problem rather, becomes, you know, what happens years from now as people choose not to get as involved, just like they chose not to get involved with the HOA. That, that's the only thing I would be a little nervous about.
I mean, we're moving, and especially when you're collecting from your taxes and you need to have a board incorporated, people are going to participate because it, you know, it hurts their pockets directly. And also with the coding, you know, you cannot build to the lake. You know, so that's something that probably Miami Lakes has not enforced. And that's why people are building fences all the way to the lake. That shouldn't be happening either because anybody has to have access to those lakes.
Correct, yeah. There are a lot of people that have built fences all the way down. They're not supposed to. I know part of that is just the challenges of enforcement. We do need to hire over time more code officers. Because right now they're, they're going crazy between commercial vehicles or this boat that's parked too long or, you know, this person to hat rock the tree. So there, there's a lot of issues that they have to be on the lookout for. And, and if I recall correctly, we only have two officers throughout the week for code enforcement, one on the east side, one on the west side. And then the weekends, we only have one officer that used to be part-time until I, I proposed to make them full-time to cover the entire town. So clearly we need more officers out there to help be more consistent about how we apply the code. And I'm in agreement with you there. And again, that could be another option going through the code. I'm just saying, I'm open to everything. I'm not shutting anything down. Just want to make sure we all have a different view of things so that, you know, we can consider that as we continue as a team to come up with new ideas.
Perfect. Just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before you, before you step down, Mr. Mayor, can I, can I? Or maybe, or maybe Brian could, could, Vice Mayor, excuse me, maybe you can answer this between the two of you. I, I was, I saw on the list, uh, Lake Dunwoody, I think it's called. That, that isn't being maintained by your association?
Our association doesn't maintain it. We have, within the HOA or technically it's a separate entity. You have the CDD which she serves on, so she couldn't give you more info.
Yeah, I'm currently the chair for that board.
So, so do you maintain through the, through the CDD, you maintain the lakes?
Yes, and we collect taxes from everyone, not only the houses on the lake. Everybody in Satori, 482 homes pay for the lake maintenance.
Interesting. Well, because, because they're, they all have access to it.
Exactly.
Because there's common areas.
Exactly. If they're saying that these lakes belong to the town or to the properties and they're common, it's for everybody to use, then everybody should have access to it.
It's hard to put the burden on all the residents when some of the lakes aren't, aren't, don't, don't give access to all the residents.
But that's what I was saying with code enforcement. So I think the key here was that those lakes needed to be available to everybody in the town. Because they, like he was saying, this is Miami Lakes. The jewel of this community, same thing in Satori. In Satori, the jewel of our community is our lake. Here in Miami Lakes, you have it in your name. It's your lakes. Everybody should have access to your lakes. Everybody should be able to canoe, if you can fish and release, whatever the case is. But that's, I think the main thing is having access to everybody to go to those lakes and then keeping them in, in, you know, in a way that is healthy, it's in compliance. But especially, I wouldn't give it to the government. I wouldn't put that burden on you guys. Because like you're saying, you only have two code enforcements. Now you need to hire somebody else to come and supervise somebody that is going to be taking care of those lakes. Because at the end of the day, somebody has to be, you have to have like a supervising board or supervising person in the town to make sure that somebody is doing their job. So you're just creating, you're going to create more jobs and then you're going to fall back because it's, it's not going to be enough people. Where here you have, you can, you, you're taking money away from people, their taxes, they're going to be involved. You're going to have a board. And it's, it's going to go through the government. So they're going to get elected through the government. They need to take a course. They need to be in compliance. It's, it's not that easy. You know, at the end of the day, they're like a mini elect. It's like he was saying, it's a mini city within a city. And it's managed by the government. You get audited. Everything needs to be spectacular. The books have to be clean and the people are actually taking care of that, not the government of your town. That's just me looking at it from, I'm not, I'm not even affected. But I do have friends that I have, one of my friends, she couldn't come and she wanted me to come and hear what's going on. I, I have no idea about this. I don't know how, how it is, how it works. So I just wanted to get a little bit more of, more information, more knowledge. But just giving a little feedback to you guys. Okay? Thank you.
And just to give you also this little nugget as to why everyone in the community pays for it, not just the lakefront residences with CDDs and, and frankly also depending on how it's written in, in the enacting ordinance for special taxing districts, special taxing districts, they can have multiple purposes. Something like the CDD in Lake Dunwoody, as it's officially called, Satori, is through the CDD is actually how they paved the roads and built the sewers within Satori. They were all privately paid through bonds issued by the, the CDD. The CDD is a quasi-governmental entity. It's quasi because yes, it's government. It's subject to the same sunshine laws, all of those things. But it's private in the sense that it's the homeowners who are the, the, the ones making the decisions and running the board. One area where that should be taken into account though is like an HOA, it tends to need, it, it basically needs a manager, a, a professional manager. Where JP takes that role here and there are certain tax savings due to the fact that he's paid for his many roles and many hats that he plays throughout the town. A CDD would need to pay for a manager. So it's a little bit of a different thing, but it definitely, I, I like the idea of how, and obviously I already have one in Satori, but for those that are considering it, it does give you, in a technical sense, more ability to, to govern, to self-govern as opposed to have your municipal elected officials be the ones governing. But it does have the, I, I do get the longevity concerns that the mayor mentioned as well as participation as a concern.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Almeno. But it also, it also would, would be affected by taxes because if, if that, that is, that goes right on as a line item on, on the tax bill.
Just like special taxing districts, correct.
Right. So, but again, if you don't, if you don't pay your tax bill, it can go, be sold to a third party and they're going to have that same issue even with the CDD.
Yeah, correct. Any other comments? While, while you come up, you can go ahead and say what you're saying.
So first, I see, see, CDD, I think taxes and more government, honestly. And, and the reason it pays for the lake in Satori is just because it also pays for the roads, the sewages, et cetera. It's, it's a pretty big bill you guys pay there. I guess for the town, are there any lakes that are not privately owned? Because when people buy these houses, they know they're buying the lake. Like that, this isn't news to them. So they have to take a responsibility in maintaining their property they own. That's the way I see it. I don't, I don't see why we would think about making new taxes, new task force. They have to maintain their property, just like they would have to maintain any other property they own. And that's why I see the issue if, if, if there's lakes that are being not maintained and they're causing an issue. One, you would hope that those homeowners take some responsibility. Obviously I understand it's hard. Five might and then there's 20 that don't. But I, that's where I see where the town comes in and make sure that they're being maintained. I don't know if our code allows for that right now. It seems like there's some ways to do it. But when you buy a house, you know what you're buying or at least you should. So that's the way I see it.
Sir?
Anyway, can you provide us with the maintenance fee that the two, Lake Hilda and Patricia pay yearly?
JP?
In my case, on Lake Mary, there is an HOA. And maybe it's, if I had an NSD, I don't need the HOA.
If that's all they do.
I would like to be assured that all the people around that lake are intent on taking care of it. If you have a financial interest in it, you will.
So that was part of the issue on Lake Hilda when Councilman Lama was the HOA president there is that not everybody was contributing equally to the maintenance of the lake. So by having the election and the majority of owners voting the affirmative to create the NSD, everybody now that lives on the lake had to contribute equally toward.
What he told us, we have to have 100%.
Depends on whether your lake has public access or not. If it is privately owned, then you need 100% support. Say like the Lockloman Lake, for example, which I know is having similar access issues as Mr. Cruz is pointing out. But if you're on a lake, like Lake Hilda has a, a little beach there by the K-38 Center or Lake Patricia that has a lake, uh, excuse me, like a little beach, I believe on Lake Saranac Avenue or one of those. Then those lakes only need 50, 50% plus one.
I got that. Well, Lake Susie's in front of my house and prior to them putting in the concrete curb and reposting the sign, I doubt if you can enforce it, Miami Lakes citizens only. But without that curb, it was a trash pit. People from all over were coming there and it, it was not a very good place.
Yeah, and yeah, you're talking about the cement curb that was put in, right? The cement curb is what we're referring to? Yeah. Yeah. And I know that for some people that's been controversial, but I- And I know that for some people that's been controversial, but I think on the whole, I think when you look at the grass there, as somebody who still lives in that area, you have seen a difference. Yeah. No, no, no. Again, I've noticed a difference in the quality of the grass, for example, since we put it in. Uh, now if there's nobody else, um, before, uh, I, I don't know if there's anybody else in the council that wants to say anything.
Yes.
Okay. Well, when you finish, uh, cause we are getting close to eight o'clock at seven forty-two. And it's my understanding that staff still had a few of the slides for all the other, uh, NSDs, some information that they wanted to present to them. Um, so I, I think, uh, we'll, we'll close out the late part of this discussion after the Vice Mayor and then we'll go back to staff and then, uh, they'll present the information and we'll give another final opportunity for the public to opine. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, JP, JP, in terms of budget expenses, actuals, um, do we have any sort of report on that, on making sure that we are on track, uh, to stay within budget on our existing NSDs? I want to turn our attention a little bit to our existing NSDs as I know a lot of the people here came specifically for that. Are we on track with our budget? Are we over budget, under budget, on budget?
We are on track on our budget.
And then, um, I think you might've mentioned to me prior to the meeting that it was possible some of our actual vendors were going to be here. Uh, are any of them in fact here?
Some of our vendors are here. Our, uh, lake maintenance vendor from Solitude Lake Management, Todd is here. We also have our vendors, uh, SFM from SFM Security for the guardhouses.
Okay. So I pose a quick question to the audience. Would any, does anyone have any questions specifically about how our lakes are maintained that possibly our lake vendor could answer? Would anyone from our security, uh, NSDs have any questions that maybe SFM, our security vendor can answer? Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, Manny. Before, yeah. Cause again, remember, uh, we have to record all these proceedings, so we need your comments to be on the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Manny Urbideo from Loch Ness. Thank you for your time. Uh, just a question of, a- as far as the involvement, can you share with, uh, the town, uh, what part or what involvement does South Florida Water Management District have with our lakes?
That's a great question for Jeremy or JP.
With, within our operations, um, other than essentially sometimes they'll do their own testings of certain, uh, public, uh, lakes, other than that, we see no real, uh, we have no interactions with South Florida Water Management, um, within the two lakes that we manage.
Does, um, South Florida Water Management have any ownership over either of the two NSDs, uh, that are lake maintenance?
Lake Hilda and Lake Patricia, there is no ownership or involvement from South Florida Water Management.
Does the water level set by South Florida Water Management affect the water level of those lakes?
I'd have to double check with Public Works if there are any outlets that lead to them. Um, but not to my recollection, whenever we make those requests for reducing the, the canals and so forth, I don't believe we've ever checked in with them on the lakeside.
Thank you, Jeremy, and I hope that answered, uh, your question. Anyone else would like to ask anything to our, our vendors who were kind enough to, to be here today? Seeing none, uh, I will just, uh, ask, I know I have one more question. Uh, actually, no, it was answered. Um, so I'll go ahead and let you close up and let you give that presentation.
Yes, exactly. Uh, so we're going to go back to staff and they're going to provide a few more slides with updates that are relevant to, uh, to everybody. So please, uh, pay attention and then we'll have one more, one more opportunity for public comment and then adjourn. Take it away, JP.
Okay. So now we're going to discuss some of the updates for our current NSDs, starting with, uh, lake maintenance. So, uh, with Lake Patricia and Lake Hilda, we have adjusted our, our number of treatments back to two treatments per month. Uh, during the summertime, it was three treatments per month. Uh, we additionally, uh, we did lake testing for bacteria, uh, which was completed in November. Uh, the next testing will take place, uh, sometime in the spring. Uh, we do expect fish stocking in May. And, um, we, as we mentioned earlier in the, in the meeting, we are, uh, working on lake minimum standards. I do have Todd here from, uh, Solitude. He's going to discuss more on, uh, the two, um, bacteria testing results that we have.
Okay. So what we have here is, uh, types of coliform bacteria and fecal coliform. So the three species that we tested there for Lake Hilda, you can see the first one is anything below a hundred and five is considered, uh, the desired range. The lake was four. Total coliform was a twenty-four hundred, um, anything below twenty-four hundred, you were in one, at one forty. And for fecal coliform, which I think is probably what most people think about when they think about bacteria, you were in the, uh, fifty. So there were literally no issues with, uh, any bacteria on the day we tested Lake Hilda. Uh, so same thing for, uh, Lake Patricia. You can see, um, we got a one, a twenty for total coliform, and then for fecal coliform, we were at twelve. So well within ranges of what is considered normal. I can tell you thirty-three years of doing this, I've had one test in one lake that was above eight hundred for a day. Protocol kicked in, and this was up in Martin County. Protocol kicked in and the next day there was, it was at a hundred. So this is pretty typical data. Um, should be pleased with that. It's, it, in terms of what we found that day, everything was good.
Thank you, Todd.
Yep.
So now we're going to jump over to our security guard districts, uh, some updates. Uh, we do have a, uh, new contracted vendor in place, uh, I Watch Systems. They are our new contracted vendor for gain arm repairs. We also, uh, have routine checkpoints every thirty minutes to one hour during night shifts at all the guardhouses. I could, um, let SFM explain that process a little more, uh, when I call them up. Um, Loch Lomond, we have, uh, Glen Eagle Drive. The emergency exit lane that was created, um, is being restored. Uh, we have removed the rocks, uh, that were there and, uh, we are now, uh, working to re-sod the area. That is going to, uh, be, uh, taken care of by the, um, the, the vendor that, uh, caused the, the incident. And, uh, we are also reviewing our options to raise the gate at Glen Eagle Drive to improve lighting and add a live camera there. Um, and, uh, we're, we're kind of looking at, uh, about either, we're, we're, we're weighing our options whether to raise it or to, uh, to put in a new fence altogether. Um, at Miami Lake Section One, uh, everything running smoothly there. Uh, we have, uh, we've added an additional live camera, camera by SFM at no cost to the community. Uh, same thing with Royal Oaks, uh, East and Royal Oaks West. Uh, we added a camera, a, an additional live camera at, uh, Eighty-Second Avenue as well as Seventy-Ninth Ave. Those cameras are intended to look directly at the, the guards themselves, to monitor the guards while they're outside. SFM did provide, uh, an umbrella as had been requested at a previous meeting, uh, on Seventy-Ninth Ave to provide shade for the guard. Unfortunately, it was not a viable option because, uh, there's not enough space for it. So, uh, we are looking into alternative options, uh, including, uh, you know, po- possibly getting, uh, uh, what's it called? Onings. Lastly, uh, and, and very importantly, uh, SFM's security services contract at Royal Oaks East and West ends in, uh, March. There are options to, you could go out to bid again, or we could do what we did with Loch Lomond, which is piggyback off of SFM's contract with, uh, Miami Lake Section One. Uh, that way all the NSDs are under the same contract and would all expire at the same time to go out to bid altogether. And then lastly, we have some in-house enhancements that we've been working on, as many of you, uh, already know, you've already received. We changed our mailout system to utilizing postcards. For, and we will be continuing to do so, uh, in our annual budget notices as well. And we are working to improve our NSD webpage, uh, to provide more transparency. So, uh, we'll be able to put, uh, you know, for example, results of lake testing on the site. We're also updating the N- N- NSD, uh, fact sheet. And, um, and any other information that would be able to, um, to provide more resources, such as this PowerPoint will make it available somehow.
Are there any, is there anyone on the council that has a question or comment on these slides?
I, I just have, uh, one more thing, I'm sorry.
Sure.
And our next meeting will be our, uh, NSD budget workshop. Uh, we do not have a, a date set right now, um, but it will be sometime in, uh, March or April, uh, it's expected. And it will be here in Town, Town Hall, Council Chavers.
Thank you. And, and actually before I, I, I bring it up to my colleagues, is there anyone on, in the public that currently wants to opine on any of the slides you just saw? Uh, Mr. Sanchez?
Mayor, members of the council, just wondering, the lakes with the analysis, are those lakes swimmable? Are they in a condition where a person can go in and swim?
So because of, somebody mentioned earlier about somebody getting sick with the year wasn't related, I actually cannot make that comment. Because that test was that day in that location. That doesn't represent the whole lake. It's a snapshot of one location. Um, in the past, when we talked about doing these tests, it would literally be probably somewhere to get statistical analysis of where you could actually make a claim like that legally. You would probably have to test in fifteen to twenty-five locations around the lake.
And if you find those same results in fifteen to twenty-five locations, would you certify that the lake is?
Then I can say based on the results from that day, the lake would be safe for swimming. However, you get a storm the next day, two weeks later, it makes completely change.
The pH of the water.
Not the pH, but it can, you brush your bacteria in. That test could literally, if we, and this is why we don't test right along the shoreline because say a, a duck swims by, a turtle swims by, if something in the bottom gets stirred up, that will alter our test. So we do have a property called Lake Lenar that I don't know if it's called E-Lake because it looks like a giant E from the Google Earth. It's a ski lake, yeah, about seventy-five acres, they ski in it. So we treat it every other Tuesday. We have been taking since nineteen ninety-two, we've been doing sampling in there every month to provide them data and it's not very far off of what yours is. But again, even with all of that data, I still can't walk into a courtroom and, and make the comment, the lake is legally safe to swim in.
Okay.
So it's, it's just, there's too many other variables that occur.
Okay. Good to know, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. To the chair.
You are recognized, Councilman Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as far as, I know you were saying you were going to send out post, you're sending postcards out now for the next, uh, meetings. Can you, uh, go over the time, timeframe, how many postcards are sent out before each quarterly meeting that we're going to have?
Approximately it was fifteen hundred, uh, notices that were issued.
Okay.
Uh, to date right now, we've only had two returned to sender. So I think that's pretty good, uh, efficacy right there. Um, and that's a good thing to, to bring up to, to, to the members here of the public. Did everyone receive that notice? Did you guys, did you hear from your red, from your neighbors? We, we're looking at ways, and this is a good thing to bring up now too, is JP has been working at other options to put out notices. I know we've used, uh, A-frames in the past. We're looking at digital options on the guardhouse to kind of have these updates where, where it's not something that needs to be manually got, put up there. It can be done remotely, uh, from JP's office. So we are looking into those avenues, but, um, some of you I think said you did not receive. Okay. Anyone else not, did not receive? On, on, on top of that, we also, uh, published it both times, uh, in the lake are noticing this, this meeting, uh, both December and January.
Enid has a question.
Yes.
It didn't have my name on it. And secondly, the postcards must have gone to the rentals and not to the official owners of the property. Is that correct? Right. So it didn't go to the owners.
It goes to the property homeowner's address. So, so.
But if we have rentals.
Right.
The address is who received it, not the official.
No. It goes to the property owner's homeowner's address. So if the property homeowner is in Wisconsin, it would go to the, the home address in Wisconsin.
Okay. That's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
I don't know why it chills, Wisconsin.
Councilman Garcia, do you have any follow?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure to, and, and it was, it was a good thing. So everyone at least received notice directly? No, you said you didn't? Okay. So, uh, you know, there's still room for improvement, so let's, if we can talk to her and see what happened there. Appreciate it.
Councilman Hersberg. Thank you, Mayor. But I did receive mine. I live in, uh, in one of the NSDs. I, I, I did say, I did note that it's, it's one of those postcards, uh, it's not exactly eye-catching. Maybe we can work on that. I get it's a standard, uh, and then mine was a little, it's a postal service, not you guys, a little roughed up, like some of it you couldn't actually read. But that's not your fault, that's the postal service. But I did receive mine and I think it's a good idea to continue them, them, those mailouts. JP is, you know, has, have you been able to take in complaints from homeowners? Has there been any issues with, you know, making sure that you reach out to the contractors about, uh, any issues and, and resolving them?
Regarding any issues?
Regarding any of the issues, but I, I assume a lot of the common things you get are about, about the gate guards.
Yeah. So the, the, the most common complaint I get is, is regarding the in arms, the, the guard gates, uh, the guard services in general. Uh, we do work, uh, in tandem with SFM. SFM is here to answer any questions as well, um, to, to discuss, but, uh, yes, we, we, we work in hand with, with them.
And then, um, about the, the budget, I based, I like the idea of potentially piggybacking on the current one and keeping it all streamlined. Uh, in my NSD, you know, when I first moved in, that my budget actually went down, which was great. And, and I, you know, a lot of people to thank for that. I just want to make sure that we are, we get the details, right? To try to keep those budgets as low as possible because there are homes that pay more there to their NSD than they even pay to the town, right? So we gotta just be on that. So I, I don't know what the current rates are for Section One compared to what we're currently paying in other NSDs, but let's just keep that in mind.
I'll, I'll just piggyback, no pun intended, off of that question. That, that was going to be what I was going to ask, which is how much does Royal Oaks East and West pay right now compared to how much they would pay if they were to piggyback off of the Section One? Cause obviously I don't want to see an increase. So if it is a decrease or stay the same, then that makes a ton of sense. Otherwise, uh, we'll see if we send it out to bid or have a discussion with Urban.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Well, I just want to make a comment. I know, I know that I, I live in one of those NSDs and, um, I, there are, there's one side that, that has more homes than the other, right, Mr. Cruz? Yeah. So they, they would probably pay because we, they, they have exactly two gates, just like we do. And just by the math, they're going to be paying less per home.
Any other comments from up here on the dais? All right. And the audience, are any, anyone else wishing to speak? Gen X's? I'm, I'm sorry? It, wait, wait, yeah, yeah, we need a, a microphone. Perfect. Okay.
I wanted to congratulate them.
Come on up. Price is right.
Congratulations to all for your appointments. J.C., Diego's, you for Vice Mayor, the new ones, Angelo and Stephen Hersberg, and you've been here, but congratulations for another term. Godspeed to you. And I want to congratulate and point out that without JP, nothing would have been done. SFM has come a long way and I'm very happy. We have four guards that are really very good. And that's a lot to say because I've been here many times. I don't know, I know some of you have heard me. But anyways, one of the things that I really wanted to mention, in addition to the service that has gotten better from both, is that I brought about the question of. In addition to the service that has gotten better from both, is that I brought about the question of asking for licenses in the last committee meeting. That was turned down, I believe Mr. Angelo Garcia was there. It wasn't a good idea, I had mentioned, it doesn't have to be permanent. It could be something that could be done at night, we've had a lot of car thefts, I just had a WhatsApp. This last week that there was a street that was hit, like, I don't even know what street it was, if it was the east or the west, we're on the east. If we can at least at night try. Not on a permanent basis, temporary, I know it's working in Lock Lomond, I know people there that have had results, and it's not that bad. Maybe we can ask for a license or just talk to the person and say, where are you going? I know they don't have to show the license. But if they take a little longer and coming in, and that camera captures the car, the person. I think we have a better chance, I know they could be walking in, just like they can be walking in in Lock Lomond and anywhere else. But it's maybe a deterrent. I think it's worth that extra step, I don't think it's gonna cost us any money. But if they break into your car or your home, and I've said this before, the deductible itself is gonna be more than what you pay a year. In taxes for the guardhouses. So if that can be something that could be discussed among you and the community, I think that's it's worth the discussion.
If I may, before you continue, JP, aren't you guys doing that in Lock Lomond? I know she, I know this in Lock Lomond, but.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, what I will say is, I'm in complete agreement with you, I remember discussing this idea with your neighbors in Lock Lomond, when we were talking about switching to S F M and. And with Mari Sol thinking about other ways that we could make it safer. Again, I agree with you that it's an extra deterrent, you'd be surprised, though, I had a a prominent resident in town that was basically saying that we were stripping people their liberty to move around.
Yeah, I know.
But so the point is, there's always gonna be some criticism about it, but I fully support you guys, if that's the direction that you guys and your community want to go. But I'm sorry, just wanted to.
I know we're not breaking any laws.
No.
Because they don't have to show the license.
Right.
I think that we we can maybe post that, but that conversation of just that snapshot of that person. I think, you know, is enough, and asking, where are you going? They don't, again, they don't have to say it, but that takes time. You know, another thing that I would, and I I know J C lives on the east, I met him picking up trash on Seventy Ninth Avenue. That's the first time with his son, he's a good citizen. The guardhouse on Seventy Ninth Avenue. That is a problem, I know today the curb started, thank you JP a hundred times, and thank you all of you, and you know we need curbs on all of Seventy Ninth and drainage, but that's not for today. But if we can get a box. On the exit. So that parents don't park there, because we can't get out. They're gonna go crazy now with this lack of swale used for parking. But if we can at least deter that, now they're doing some of it in Silvercrest, I know Silvercrest is gonna scream and yell, because they can't get out. Today, there was a guy honking, no, yesterday, Wednesday, there was a guy honking, he can't get out, and it's frustrating. But if we can at least use Seventy Ninth to get out, that light, everybody knows, if you take that light. It's 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 brutal, you could get a manicure, like my friend used to say, at the light on on Seventy Ninth and one five four, you know?
Are you, when you say a box, you're referring to like the don't block the box square on the intersection?
Put a sign, don't block the the guardhouse, at the end of the day, it's a public road, but it is, we're paying for the guardhouses, right? Can we do that? Can we put the box? Is it legal for us to do that?
The box you're referring to putting a do not block the, I I checked with Public Works, it is something that we are are able to do.
If we can do that.
Provided funding.
Yeah, provided funding?
Funding provided.
Pay for the paint. I could pay for the paint.
I think it's worth it.
That's not a, yeah.
You know, it's not, I think it'll help, and that that way, maybe, you know, police can enforce the.
It was, it creates an enforceable fine, essentially.
But we have to do it, listen, I don't want to do it, I have family that works in that school, and I, we've been to the school. JP knows it, we went to a meeting, we had a lot of law enforcement there, intimidating law enforcement, I thought, you know, I was even afraid to talk, and I'm not one to be afraid to talk. But then you don't see those on Seventy Ninth Avenue, you just see that one school guard, am I right or wrong? I think you live on the east too, one school guard, maybe a police officer now, we don't see them there, they don't go past the guardhouse, am I right or wrong? We need to have some law enforcement, I don't want somebody there at twenty-four seven, but during those crucial hours, we need to be able to get out of our community. You know, another thing that I, when I talked about the the box, the violation of. That we have been going through about the ordinance. The ordinance we've been violating because we allow those guards to go to the bathroom, we lift that guard arm up, we're supposed to be getting twenty-four seven. It's a state thing, I just heard that now we can't even give them meal breaks. These people are humans, they're not A I robots, they need to eat, they need to go to the bathroom. If we can get a device that allows them to eat, go to the bathroom, and have that guard arm operate. So that we just don't let anybody in, because a bathroom break can be thirty minutes, depending on how that person is feeling, am I right or wrong? And that's thirty minutes that anybody can come in. You know, again, I go back to the same thing, we're paying the guardhouse, what, less than a thousand dollars a year? And our deductible is probably gonna be much more than that if our cars get broken into or our homes get broken into. So that's, or, God forbid, anything worse. So that's where I'm at with that, if we can discuss those things and put a device where that guard arm can continue to work. When that person is eating, or when that person is in the bathroom, and they have every right to use the bathroom and to eat, it's an eight hour shift. You know, and we've come a long way, but if you're, if you don't know how to treat your employees well, you're not gonna get good service, they're gonna be miserable, and that's the fact of life. And you know, every time we go through one of those guard houses and that guard arm is up, what is it saying? You understand what I'm saying? So thank you, Godspeed again to all of you, I hope, you know, you do good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and we for to do that, what you're proposing, which I think is a great idea, one of the things that we had talked about previously, is we might need to amend. The ordinances that created your district, right, and we may have to go through now this process that we created, just to ensure that it's fine. I don't foresee there being an issue with 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 your fellow neighbors going ahead and approving it, but. I I think it's something worth working, working on, and I'm more than happy to work with my colleagues about to to get it done, because there's a couple other. Guard gate districts that also want to have more security options available to them.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Hersberg.
Something that I remember that that we used to do at the guard gates many years ago, and I don't know why it stopped, when it stopped, the purpose of it. First of all, I agree that I'm not a big fan of the license during the day, but I agree at night, it makes sense. But when you used to exit, and the sign is still up by one of the entrances, the guard gate from twelve AM to six AM would not automatically go up. The guard had to go and take your license plate and then open the exit, I don't know why that stopped. I feel like that's a nice deterrent as well, when they know they can't just leave out, the gate won't go up right away. I'm not sure the reason why that stopped, but it did stop, I do remember they used to do it all the time, like, I'm talking two thousand twelve, twenty ten, I'm not sure when it happened. But that stopped, so I don't know why that stopped, I think that was a good deterrent as well.
That is a part of the current post orders, and that is something that I I could work with S F M to ensure that it's being enforced.
They don't do that at all. I I just go straight, like, it doesn't matter what time, I don't exit that much at twelve o'clock, but I do, and it just goes straight up, like, no one's, no one's there opening. I mean, at least they don't come out, I I don't notice any delay, so that can be discussed, if that's supposed to be happening, let's just make sure that's supposed to be happening then.
Mr. Vice Mayor, did you have something to say? Okay, well, it's eight ten, so let's, you know, I'm gonna turn it back to you guys, but. Hey, I'm just saying it's eight ten, so let's try to start wrapping this up, and starting with Gen Xers, go ahead, and I think, ma'am, I believe you also wanted to come up, okay, please.
So this is, I mean, quick from my end, I don't know if it's gonna be quick for you, but what is the voting process? I hear about fifty and one percent, I hear about a hundred percent. How many people are we talking about? And and what, how would that affect?
I think those numbers in particular were specific to starting the N S D, as far as the, to make a modification, I'll turn it over to my colleague here. Whose ordinance it was that that modified the procedure for amending an existing N S D.
Yeah, amending an existing N S D requires a very similar process as what was outlined by JP. Except it is a majority in all cases, if I'm if I'm not mistaken, what we approved, right? It was a majority in all cases, because at that point, the N S D is already created. But other, but that is to amend an N S D, it's a, and and we keep in mind, that is only affecting the N S D. So something like us in Satori, we're not affected at all if the Lock Lomond N S D is amended, or if the Lake Hilda. Or any of the other ones, if they can do whatever they want, it doesn't affect us, that's up to them, and then if they want to make those changes, they're they're welcome to do it.
And I'm not talking about those changes, I'm talking mainly about day to day. Direction or work that needs to be done.
Yeah, day to day direction and and operational control is right there.
But it has to be in accordance with the ordinance that created the the N S D originally.
So before that used to be done through a committee, and now it's only done through the manager? I like, I want to get it clear.
So that's where where N S Ds and C D Ds differ very strongly. In a C D D, you have a very involved board. With a a day to day operations manager, because the C D D has so broad powers. An a special taxing district is extreme, is almost the opposite, in that it is extremely limited in its power. If the N S D's ordinance that creates it says, this is a guardhouse N S D. The purpose of this N S N S D is to. Build and maintain a guardhouse. There's nothing that you can do outside of building and maintaining a a guardhouse. So if you ever go and read the original ordinances for these, for these N S Ds, they talk about initially one guard. You know, unarmed, I forgot the details now, but they're very, very specific, you can't really go beyond that.
But at the end of the day, who's gonna execute that is the manager, not the people.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
Correct.
Lydia?
Lydia Hernandez from Royal Oaks. Congratulations to all of you on the board, and I also want to point out the fact that John Paul has been doing an excellent job. I text him all the time and he responds immediately, and usually calls me back if he doesn't respond by text. Two things I want to point out, number one, wouldn't it be better to put those humongous. Speed bumps that you've now put in Royal Oaks, which are very tedious. Before the guard gate, so they don't break our our arms, because apparently they're not getting reimbursed for the repair. So if not as big as the ones that are already there, I think they're just too big, sorry, John Paul. I think they're just too big, those. Those speed bumps, but that would help have the people not hit those guard gates, and would certainly reduce our budget. And the second thing is, on Christmas Eve, I was invited to a Christmas Eve party at Lock Lomond, and I was asked for my license. And I immediately thought, well, why don't we have this? So Christmas Eve, I texted John Paul. And he responded, and he said, the H O A said no, but we wanted it, the people of. Of Royal Oaks, just because the H O A didn't want it, the people did, I may be mistaken, Omero. I don't remember if it was the H O A or the people in that other committee that was dismantled. The committee, right, but we wanted it, the people, the people that I've talked to, and that's a lot of people, so we want to see if that, we could revisit that. Especially in the evening hours, it sure is dark out there, sometimes I've gotten home dark and late, and it it, those gates are really dark. If they get to ask people for their license, it might serve as a great deterrent, and it'd be great if it also happened during the school hour, and see if we get. Deterrent on those people coming in and holding us hostage, because I can't get out of my house, can't get in, can't get out. And so I would like to reconsider these things as you talk amongst yourselves, and again, I thank you all for listening, and John Paul, amazing, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else before we start to close out?
We all want to go home, and so do I, and you guys, so I'll make it quick. With the driver's license issue, when JP brought us to the committee back in the days. Every time I go to Lock Lomond, I don't give my license, and I tell the guy, no, you have to let me in. I asked him a couple of months ago, what happens when somebody from Uber comes and they say they don't have a driver's license? Do you let him in, or you tell him to go? He has to let him in.
Yes.
If you know you're right, you don't have to give a license. The issue we have in Royal Oaks, and they have on the east side, and they told me that I did not care about the east side, I do care about Royal Oaks, and I do care about all of Miami Lakes. Is with the school board. And I've been here before, and you guys know it, not until we have a meeting with the school, and we have a serious conversation with Mr. Alonso being the district. And they try to work with us and do something with the traffic. Security, we have the guardhouse. We have the the cameras, the N S D. JP spoke with me the other day, that now the H O A can go ahead and put a life fee outside, which will probably end up doing that. The license is not gonna do anything. First of all, if the guy's on the other side, when he gets to see the guy, it's dark, he will even see who the heck is driving. It's totally a waste of time, and if we do that in Royal Oaks, the traffic is gonna go up to a hundred and seventy, and that was my biggest issue. On the other hand, let the police do their work. S F M is not the police department. Let us add our each branch to what they're supposed to do, so be very careful with that license issue, and I'm sorry, but I think it's a terrible idea.
Hey, I do have one question for you, JP, what hours is Lock Lomond asking for the licenses?
All day.
All day?
All day.
Okay.
All day.
He answered it for me.
Got it.
Through through the mayor?
The Councilmember Fernandez.
I of I see the issue with with asking for the license on the east east side of Royal Oaks especially. But I don't, I wouldn't be opposed in the evening time, I I know that it would be unbearable if you ask for in the daytime, especially during school hours, it. You know, you you would cause a traffic, you know, the the media would be there, but I don't, I wouldn't be opposed for the evening, I think it it's an extra, it's just a deterrent. Well, at least I think that to 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 her point. I think that it it would really be addressing the the break-ins, or or at least the unlocked cars, the the burglars that we had going into.
I'm gonna ask, though, that, eh, and I, because I know what's gonna happen, we're all gonna start going back and forth. And again, there are others that that need to go home, want to go home, what I would ask is that we continue this conversation, but perhaps. Outside of the of of the context of the meeting. Just so that, you know, again, so that Lydia can get with Omero and and with Councilman Fernandez.
I talk to him all the time.
Okay. So I, or do you have something else to add, or are you just going to respond to?
I was gonna respond, but I'll make it very short, number one, we do want the deterrence at night, I was asked for my driver's license in Lock Lomond at night, by the way, I didn't give it to him, I refused. And I asked her, under what authority are you asking me for this? Because we weren't allowed to have them, okay, so we were let go, we were let in, and they also asked, where are we going? And which they're also not allowed to ask, so I said, no, I wasn't gonna do either one, and I thought he was gonna call the police, but he let me through. But you know how many people were behind me waiting, five, five or six cars? That's what I want to achieve, and you're right, J C, there's going to be a traffic, a mess in the traffic, that's what I want, because up to now, nobody listens to us. The school board doesn't listen, nobody listens to us, but then, if that happens, I go, okay, maybe they'll come to the table and negotiate with us. That's what I'm trying to achieve, not a perfect solution, but a solution to get them to the table. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your time, thank you for being here, thank you to my colleagues, with that, we are adjourned.